Two seconds we will be.
Oh, I like my idea, don't you?
All right, we are good to go.
Okay, we'd like to call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners' regular session Tuesday, August 25th, 2025 to order. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comment today? Okay, hearing none. Our board meeting agenda. Are there any additions and/or corrections to as it was printed?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Samke. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. County Administrator Lutzen, would you run through our consent agenda, please?
Yes, today we have approval of the July 15th board meeting minutes, the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts payable, 2025 bank depositories, the 2025 electronic fund transfer delegation, approval of the 2026 to 2027 radiological emergency preparedness grant agreement, and approval of the 2025-26 Department of Veterans Affairs grant.
Thank you. Is there anything in the consent agenda that any commissioner would like move to the regular agenda?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. If I may, is there any changes to the bank depository or electronic funds?
Nope, just changing the delegation to Heather from chair.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Ort. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Greg Schultz, you're up quick today.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning I've got three items for your consideration. The first one is rezoning and preliminary plat application for Long Dean Hills addition. This is in part of government lots two and three, Section Three Township 119, Range 29 in Dassel Township. It's parcel 070045030. This parcel is a 21.15 acre parcel, which the whole thing has been rezoned and will be platted. Lot one will be 3.06 acres, lot two 3.2 acres, and lot three will be 13.3 acres. All access from the lots will be from the existing Minnesota Highway 15 access point, which is up on the north part of the plat. Lots are able to support both primary and secondary septic systems. Surface water will run in the same direction as preconstruction, either towards the lake or it'll go towards that big wetland area to the southwest. Wetland deletion was completed before there was a 50-foot buffer around that wetland that they can't put any buildings on. Attorney Emily Wood did the title opinion on it and found that title work was satisfactory for the direction of taxes to be paid at the time of recording of the comments.
Questions for Greg?
Is this, who owns this?
Devon Lundeen.
Devon Lundeen, okay.
No one at the hearing objecting from the public, okay.
No objections.
It's currently zoned A1, is that correct? But it hasn't been farmed or used for any kind of agricultural.
For years, apparently years ago, 15, 20 years ago, apparently somebody had donkeys on it. Indication we had of any agricultural use.
Okay, we have two motions on this particular one. One will be to approve the rezoning and one for a preliminary plat, so I would entertain motions on this.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve rezoning application number 16622 to change the 21.5 acre parcel 070045030 from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to R2 Rural Residential District. This rezone would be to allow for the development of a three-lot plat in part of government lots two and three of Section Three Township 119, Range 29 in Dassel Township.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
Just, well, I already described it as part of government lots. Have I just not seen that before?
Government lots are, take the place of quarter-quarter sections around water bodies, kind of meandering, nothing square. That's government lots, it's around water bodies, other than quarter-quarter sections.
Okay, I just hadn't seen it, the script, the description, that's what's throwing me off.
It encompasses both government lots, two and three parts of each.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Now we would be looking for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve preliminary plat application number 16623 for the three lot plat of Lundeen Hills addition. The lots are located in part of government lots two and three of Section Three Township 119, Range 29 in Dassel Township.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Samke. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Next item I have is for the approval of interim use permit 16621 for aggregate mining and processing of property located northeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section 13 Township 118, Range 32 in Danielson Township. This is for, on parcel 050110000. This is a renewal of an existing interim use permit from 2019 to operate an aggregate pit. This is 14.14 acre gravel pit that is located in a parcel land which consists of a total of 243 acres. It was originally permitted in February of 1995 and occupied 17.65 acres. Over the past five years, approximately 1,074 cubic yards of materials have been sold from this site. Materials will be transported in the pit on County State Aid 28, east or west. There's no dewatering on the site. There's a four-foot berm of old burden currently around the pit area. Runout for the pit due to rain will remain within the pit area. Appropriate reclamation plan is in place, which indicates the land will be restored to ag land when it's completed, when it's been depleted of aggregate materials.
Questions for Greg?
Any concern about the traffic on CASA 28, the weight of the trucks and so on? It's good?
There hasn't been any, no.
Okay.
It's 10-ton rated.
Okay.
I noticed Schreiber viewed the site and noticed there's ag equipment stored. Does it matter? I mean, is that?
There was a digger out there, just one piece of equipment.
So is that okay for people to store equipment on there?
For that one, I don't, it's a minimal-use pit, very minimal. I think they use it mostly for their own materials. With only 1,000 cubic yards being used in five years, so.
But normally, we discourage that, is that?
Unless they use that equipment for, sometimes they use it for digging and dredging around them to kind of level off the pits as well. There are pits that have ag equipment in it, but I think they use them within the pit.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, they don't have, they're just renewing the permit. They don't have, I mean, they only used 1,000 yards in the last five years. They don't have.
Yeah, they didn't indicate that there's any major project coming or anything like that. It's just to use as needed over the next five, six years.
And then Greg, when, you and the other Greg were discussing the berm height, the four, you said possibly slowing down recreational vehicles before getting to the slope. Is that a?
That's the reason why they have the berms around, so somebody doesn't come flying up over the top and some of those ATVs and things like that, so they know there's some type of slowdown before they can get to the edge of the pit.
Okay.
It's a rumble strip.
Yeah, basically. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve a six-year interim use permit for aggregate mining and processing at a property located on the northeast quarter to the northeast quarter in Section 13 Township 118, Range 32 in Danielson Township with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Ort. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Last item I have today is for final plat of Ashville Shore Sixth Edition. Property located in part of government lot one, Section 12 Township 118, Range 29, Collinwood Township, parcel 030147001. This plat is made up of part of a 21.2 acre parcel, 030147001, located in parts of government lot three and one, on 746 Avenue in Section 12 Township 118 and Range 29 in Collinwood Township, lot one, 1.54 acres, lot two will be 1.15 acres, and lot three will be 1.63 acres. Access is going to be all off of 746 Avenue. Variance is granted in February 25 to allow non-standard septic systems to service these lots, so the entire surface of the proposed lots being made up of disturbed soils. These disturbed soils, how they got to be that point was that the surface soils for this, this entire property here was used to make 746 Avenue back years ago. So there's nothing needed on top. That's why it's going to be a non-standard Type IV system for these new septic systems that go onto these lots. Contour shown on the property plat indicates service water for the three lots will go towards the lake, just as it is now. An entitled opinion been submitted and Attorney Emily Wood reviewed that and found that work is satisfactory with trustee signing declaration, property tax direction, and mortgage letter signing direction before the plat can be recorded. There was an assessment on these lot plats on this property in the past, and that has been, and that assessment was paid June 30th of 2025, so that's been satisfying.
This is going to kind of finish that area. There's not really much left that can be.
Just a little bit, the remaining part, about 21 acre part, that could be platted, a couple more lots, I suppose. Pretty much, yeah, the whole, the Meeker County side on the west side will be pretty much the whole shoreline.
Any other questions for Greg? Okay. Do we have a motion?
No. Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve a final plat application for three lot plat of Ashville Shore Sixth Edition. The lots are located in Section 12 Township 118, Range 29 in Collinwood Township.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg. That's a final. Do you need my, me to stop by?
That's a final plat, yeah.
So I have to stop by and sign it, right?
No, we don't have any. My lawyers will be coming.
Okay.
Coming a week or so.
Okay. We're about 10 minutes ahead here.
What is wrong with you? You would say. Know what will happen.
Well, no, but it's a public meeting and if we advertise.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It was advertised for eight days.
Well, it was. Oh, great.
So we're really behind.
They're on that damn.
Every time somebody says that, we get in.
I have a lot to say about this.
Which is our duty and I'm fine with it.
A lot to say about this one, so.
There you go.
Okay, well, you have time.
Mr. Chair, my suggestion on this one is that we do our motoring and then I can give a brief overview and then we'll see if there's any public comments.
Okay, I would look for a motion to open a public meeting.
On a public hearing, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
I am sorry.
Already in a public meeting.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This public hearing is now open.
So, Mr. Chair, as the request for board action states, there's a number of statutes that provide authority for the county to enact ordinances such as the one that we have in front of us today. The general purpose of this ordinance is that from time to time when we have high rainfalls like we did this year, that there's a need to impose slow and or no wake ordinance, or restrictions on lakes to prevent property damage to docks, to the shoreline, and, you know, basically we want to slow that whole traffic down so you're not pushing as much water up against the shorelines. It was determined this year that the authority to establish those restrictions falls on the county board. And as you recall, back in early July, you adopted a resolution that put a temporary restriction in place through, for 30 days. We've now reached that 30-day mark, but during that process, we wanted to do something that was permanent, that had an automatic trigger so that you didn't need to take action when there were severe rainfalls like we had in late spring, early summer. We looked at a number of ordinances that were adopted by other counties to develop an ordinance of our own, and so this is a solution that many counties have pursued. Working with the sheriff, we determined the lakes in which we primarily get complaints, and those that are included, which include Big Swan Lake, Lake Arvila, Lake Erie, Lake Minibel, Lake Manuelas, and Star Lake, which are ones that are wholly within Meeker County. Additionally, we identified four lakes that cross county borders, and those are Bell Lake, Collinwood Lake, Lake Francis, and Lake Coronas. If the, if our neighboring counties who we share those lakes with adopt a similar ordinance, then those restrictions will go into place. If not, then those restrictions are not in place, but it allows us to not have to come back and take further action in the event those counties decide to pursue something. So with that, we're available for any questions, but otherwise, my recommendation is to approve the ordinance.
Questions?
I don't have any.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's more of that shoreline damage that is so, this, you know, really concerning because not everybody has protected their shoreline with either riprap or some type of thing. So when you get awake too close to the shoreline in high water, it tends to wash up and just continue to eat away on the shoreline. So bringing down dirt, silt, and other things into the water that is unwanted.
I see we had a water rescue in the Crow River. Somebody tubing that. Good work on your part. Thank goodness for cell phones, I guess, huh?
Yep.
That was interesting. So, it is a concern, for sure.
It is, and if that, if we get a bunch of rain in a short amount of time, it's better to enact something without having to get us all together to get it done. Let's just have a trigger.
Either you're gonna, yeah, wait two weeks, or you're gonna
Right.
have a special meeting just to
Right.
So, no, it makes perfect sense.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an ordinance imposing slow no-wake zone. I'm sorry, we're not there yet?
We're still in the public hearing, so first, Mr. Chair, I would recommend seeing if there's any public members of the public.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this potential ordinance?
I did have, a couple people did call me about those kind of concerns and was recommending and that we would do something like this, and so that's good. And I do know that from the aquatic invasive species perspective, they appreciate having those no-egg zones in order to kind of keep stirring things up and causing issues in that regard as well. So those are a couple positives for this.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, you're using ordinary high water as that trigger, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's what will then remove the ordinance, or remove the no-egg zone, so.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward.
Absolutely.
So then I would suggest looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olberg. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we can entertain.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an ordinance imposing slow no-wake watercraft restrictions on designated lakes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I'm sorry, it's an ordinance that requires a roll call vote.
Wait until after I took the vote.
It struck me after you said.
I nudged him and said, let him go on.
Corey, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we have our HHS team here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kristen Langerman. I supervise our intake licensing and child protection unit at Meeker County, and today we're just hoping to kind of give you a brief overview of what that unit does and some kind of numbers from last year and so far this year of the rap.
I'm Beth Hess. I specifically work in the area of child protection.
Okay, so our team is comprised of 10 workers. We have five child protection workers who handle kind of everything from screening through adoptions, and we'll get into that a little bit more in depth. We have one truancy worker, Sarah, and then a parent support outreach worker, which is a voluntary program, and that's Morgan, and then two staff who do both intake and licensing, Jenny and Tina, and our case aide, Christine. And I realized that I forgot to put in a slide for Christine, and she is kind of the backbone of, she helps keep everything kind of running smoothly and does a lot of work for us. We call her the glue of our team, so just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that so I don't forget later. So like I mentioned, we have a lot of different programs within this unit, intake, child protection, child welfare, parent support outreach, and licensing. The slide kind of outlines all of the different areas that we cover, which we'll get into again, like I said. So intake, their primary responsibility, 50% of each of the staff is spent with intake for both Tina and Jenny. Their primary duties when they're doing intake is to take all the calls, walk-ins, and emails for child protection reports, and all of social services, referrals, and information requests. They also participate in our daily screening for child protection reports and send out those reports to our MDT, which is comprised of our county attorney's office, sheriff's department, and Litchfield Police Department. So last year, you can see in 2024, they took over 2,000 reports in intakes, and in 2025, we are over 1,200 as of last week when I pulled these numbers. So we're on track for still completing probably more than last year at this point, and it breaks down the different service areas of reports that they take on any given day.
If I may, childcare licensing, 14 last year, only four this year?
Correct, yep. So I'm not sure exactly where that's at with the kind of ups and flows. We typically maintain, and I have a slide kind of on specific licensing and how many homes we have licensed, but we generally maintain about the same amount of licensed homes as we lose homes and license them. But we are, the Childcare Coalition was reinstated this year, and we are actively participating in that group to look at how do we retain and, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, gain new licensed homes for childcare.
So four is the number of new requests.
New requests, okay.
New, yes, correct. Yep.
Is that, I was gonna say, is that like relicensing, is that an annual?
Those are, yeah, so there's annual visits and reannual. Those wouldn't be entered in as an intake. These intakes are either new referrals or possibly licensing investigations, so.
So our totals from '24 to '25 are down considerably in every area, if you look at the bottom total.
Yeah, and we're only, we still have five more months of the year, so. Yep, yep.
So we're probably where we should be, or not.
I think so, yeah. I think we're on track to be about the same. I think over the last several years, they've been pretty consistent with how many intakes we're taking on any given day, so. So child protection screening, we meet daily. Like I said, our requirement when we get child protection reports is to screen within 24 hours of receiving the report. Sometimes we screen sooner because there are some responses that require us to actually see the alleged victim within 24 hours of getting the report. So we kind of have to determine that as intakes are coming in, if they need to be screened immediately and responded to immediately, and then we utilize the Minnesota Child Protection Screening Guidelines to determine whether the reports meet criteria for a response or not.
So do you get resistance sometimes where you can't meet with them in 24 hours because of, or?
Like parental resistance, you mean? Sometimes I think we try our best, and if we know that we have to respond, it's usually a higher-risk case. Sometimes law enforcement's often involved in that because there may be a criminal component, and so we work pretty closely with them. We have the authority to go to schools, if school is in session, to interview children or to do the observation as well. So we try to meet that requirement whenever possible. And for, that's for investigations, and then assessments require a five-day response. So all of them are pretty quick turnaround time.
And so how about your own safety? Some of these situations you are going into are probably not so good.
Yep, and so we send every single report that comes through for child protection to our MDT and coordinate with law enforcement. So if we have specific safety concerns or they've identified a safety concern, we can have an officer come with us, and we have a really good partnership with both law enforcement agencies to utilize them, or to just have someone around the corner. If we're like, eh, that may trigger it more, you know, we might just have them kind of on standby and let them know what the situation is, so.
Sometimes law enforcement intervention makes the situation more volatile, honestly. So sometimes it's just better to go without.
Yeah, okay.
You do not go unannounced to a home. You announce ahead of time, or set up.
It depends, sometimes.
Depends on the situation. So can I just get an example of unannounced?
Yeah, so if I'm having difficulty reaching the person by phone, sometimes I'll show up at their house and they don't know that I'm coming. Likely, they'll know that I've been trying to reach them through phone contact, but sometimes they're unavailable, so sometimes I will show up at the house, just.
And then do they have to let you in?
Not, no, they don't. They can have the option of not allowing.
Does that happen often?
Sometimes it does. It's not very often, I guess.
I think that if it's a higher-risk case and we're a little bit worried about if it's maybe a family that we've seen a lot of reports come in on and we're, we think there might be something else going on that we're not catching, even though we have tried to collaborate with them and build rapport with them, we might then utilize like a higher, going out unannounced just to see if we can see what's actually happening versus giving them the heads up of, okay, we're coming out, and they can kind of resolve maybe the issue at hand. So sometimes that may be like a conditions of the home. Often, we do try to work with the families before we show up so they have some chance to kind of work through that, and if it's a continual problem, then we might just show up to kind of identify like, okay, this is a concern. So it's really kind of a case-by-case basis that we, we'll talk about it during screening and see like what's the best route. Do we want to go interview the kids independently? Is this like, we want to interview them as a family? Do we need to utilize the CAC and just do an observation and not do an interview? So it's really kind of dependent on a lot of different factors.
So can you go into the school and speak to a child without parental permission?
Yes.
It's specific in statute.
Okay.
To give you that authority.
I always struggle a little bit that you have to call them and say, we're coming to look at your house and see if you have groceries and blah, blah, so they do, and then a week later, they don't. That's what, you know.
And a lot of it is, we try to build that rapport with them and talk about like, what are the issues at hand, and then how do we, how do we get you there and then maintain it? So by building that rapport, we can often get in and actually So by building that rapport, we can often get in and actually provide services than showing up and making it more of a punitive response, then we often get more resistance that way. So it, again, it kind of depends on what we already know about the situation, about the family, and just all of those different factors.
Sounds like you're there to come alongside them, not come against them.
Correct, yep. Yeah, we really try hard here to do that with our families because that's important, so.
Yeah.
So I had a presentation, I was at a presentation once by our undercover drug enforcement, and they talk about the children sometimes they find when they do a drug bust. Are you and get called at that point, or it is?
Yep, so often our task force will call us right when they're on the scene, and we will send a social worker out. And that kind of, when that happens, it's all hands on deck because we don't really know what we're walking into, so our intake workers will be typing up the intake, finding all the information they can, the child protection workers often out on the scene. Licensing might be calling homes just in case we need a foster home, and other people are locating other resources and stuff, so we kind of just band together in those situations because we're out there and we don't really know what we're going to walk into as well.
So when you walk into something like that, how do you decompress from that? How do you take care of yourself?
We have a great team. Our team is phenomenal, and we love to laugh and just process through things with each other. I think everybody's really good about coming back and decompressing through that and talking about like what happened, what decisions were made, and we like to make those decisions collaboratively, so it's not just the weight of one worker being like, I made this decision now, I have to, like, that weight is on me. So we really do a lot of collaborative decision-making through any safety planning placements, network planning, that's kind of all done as a team, and I think that helps alleviate that too.
Steve?
I was just gonna, earlier this year, we had, this was on Stearns County sideline, but also on your rescue calls, a lot of these, I shouldn't say a lot, that's probably not a fair assessment, but many of these instances tend to have calls for service from rescue or for different things too. And we had one on the Stearns County side that we actually, we made the call on. Just when you get in the home and you see some things and they don't look right, I mean, when we leave, we're, we collaborate, like, did you see what I saw? And, you know, and then we turn that over to Stearns County and then they take it from there. So I mean, there's, they tend to have more calls for service, so there tends to be rescue squads or ambulance or somebody in their house at different times, and we all have duties to report things that don't look right, either welfare problems, you know, of the children, safety problems.
We receive a lot of referrals from law enforcement, either just to do some outreach or to look at whether there's an actual child protection concern. And we've worked again hard, like even through on-call, like they're aware of our processes, they know what to look for, they're aware of kind of how we safety plan and how we try to find family members if they can't stay in the home. And so we just have a really good working relationship through even after hours when it's an on-call situation.
As I asked how we decompress, I've been in this position for over twenty years. I've accrued plenty of vacation. I use my vacation. I take time off, I spend time with my family at the lake.
Good. Quick question, not to go backwards, but on the intake statistics, can one person or one family be in multiple categories? So we're not talking necessarily twelve hundred and fifty-two people here, but there could be in various multiple listing?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good point, good point.
So like we kind of touched on, and we'll just briefly cover this, so when we receive a report, we can either screen it in or screen it out. Sorry, I think you were gonna cover this.
Yes, so when we screen reports in, there's basically two types of ways that Minnesota delegates how we respond to child protection reports, family assessment, family investigation. And we explained the timeframes on that, and when we have screened out reports, we do have options of offering voluntary services, which is a really nice component that the state has built in, because sometimes families are just on the line of, maybe they could use some help, but it doesn't really meet criteria for us to screen in a report. And we can offer voluntary services, which is a really nice way to engage them prior to any maltreatment occurring, hopefully.
Get ahead of it.
We see a lot of impoverished families, and often those come in as a child protection report, and we are left deciding, is this a poverty concern where we need to get resources in or is it actually neglect? And so we have those conversations too as a team and often refer those initially to our parent support outreach program because there's allocations with that program to be able to assist families with those things to prevent it from entering child protection. So we've really, over the last year and a half, dedicated one worker to doing that program, and we've seen a lot of increase in engagement and families that are actually participating, so.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of talked about this already, what we do when we meet with families, basically assessing safety, coming up with a plan with them, engaging family networks and community resources to mediate the situation that we're basically going for.
And then the other piece, we do also do facility investigations, so if we have any licensed child foster homes or family childcare homes in Meeker County, we are responsible for conducting those child protection investigations if there needs criteria in their care as well.
How about long-term care, like nursing homes or?
Those are different licensed bodies, so we don't typically investigate those.
So if they come to you, you would pass them on to a program?
So schools and childcare centers, PCA, nursing, like there's some different DHS or DCYF typically license those, so those go through a different process.
And when you get a, when you receive a report, Steve mentioned that sometimes that can come from emergency services. Where did they come from? Where is your source? Is it private people calling you or?
Yeah, we have a whole, I mean, we get a lot from law enforcement, schools, neighbors, family members, I mean, people can choose to, I mean, there's mandated reporters, so obviously they're required to report, and then voluntary reporters who can choose to remain anonymous as well, and so we, I think we see every type of report come in, so. So our voluntary programs, like we talked about, our child welfare, typically we utilize this for older youth, trying to connect them with maybe mental health services. So if they're not, don't have a diagnostic assessment or comp eval to be eligible for children's mental health yet, we might offer some services to help the parent get that DA scheduled so they can then be eligible potentially for, see if they're eligible for children's mental health. Our PSOP program, in addition to offering voluntary services for screened out reports, we've built up having referrals from public health in the schools when they're seeing a need and partnering with the family to make that referral over to our agency. And then Morgan's also going into the schools monthly, kind of like we do with our truancy program, to meet with the social workers, identify families who might be struggling with attendance before it meets criteria for child protection and doing some outreaches in those situations to bridge that gap. And then Sarah doing truancy does the same thing with our middle schools and high schools and just has really good working relationships with all of our schools to try to prevent it from getting to the point where kids are not getting their education.
Is truancy a big?
Much happen all the time, so I mean, I think we have a lot of, I think particularly after COVID, we see, we saw a lot of increase in kids who are struggling with social anxiety, the increase in online schooling ability, the chemical health, mental health.
Stamina, kids don't, I mean, they've been out of school, so they have a hard time with stamina being in school all day.
So she does.
The next slide kind of talks about the number of truancies, actually.
Yep, so last year, and these are a little bit hard because it doesn't, this is following our calendar year versus the school year, so Sarah had a hundred and three last year. That was when we kind of pulled, I think, Morgan in to help with some backup because, you know, come springtime, that's when it's, kids are usually hitting that seven-day mark. To do a meeting, look at some individualized services before we bring it into court, to try to prevent it from going into court. And then this year, because that was only spring through and school hasn't started up yet again, she's already at fifty-seven, so definitely an increase. And in addition, she's doing three-day and five-day outreaches to the families before it hits the seven-day mark. So if they're unexcused for those timeframes, she's also reaching out to try to see like, did they just not know? If there's something else going on, to kind of prevent it from ever getting to that seven-day mark, so.
We did something a few years ago with this, didn't we, Brandy, where we?
Started a.
Started it, yeah.
Hired the truancy officer.
Keep them out of court.
And the safe schools meetings, you're seeing a lot more referrals because the schools are actually following through because they know the process and they have buy-in from human services to follow through with those referrals. So before, I think we weren't really catching all of the children because the schools are like, well, if they're not going to do anything, what's the point of referring them?
But now they're involved, and I remember someone saying they'll even go knock on the door in the morning and say, I'm gonna take you to school. I mean, it can be parents working and the kids not, you know, there's a lot going on.
Having the parents shut off their devices at night and making sure that they're shut off by ten PM, and so they're not staying up all night or even, I remember a conversation we had in one of our meetings where we put two alarms in their room and way across the room, so the alarm was going off, so the child had to actually get out of bed to go shut the alarm off. So those are kind of the things that they're working on in the front end, just.
They still do that.
And Sarah does a lot of like incentivizing too, you know, those kids are getting to the age of like driver's ed and different things, and if we have some funding available to help with that, or that can kind of be their like incentive for attending school, so we really try to look at how do we set them up for like success overall, not just in school, and so kind of assessing where they're at with that and what their goals are. So she does a really, really good job of that.
I assume during COVID, nobody was checking on anything, right? I mean, so we don't, they were at home.
Yeah, it was a little bit different because we weren't necessarily always in the home physically, but, and kids, I think there was a lot more leniency with even the what was required, you know, during that time for participating in school, whether it was like actual showing up for class. Like every school kind of had a different process for the at-home, like at-schooling piece of it, so I think they weren't really keeping too.
I found a statement you made interesting, that stamina to go the whole day was interesting.
Because they've probably been on the half a day to get everything in and then going off, and now they're expected to go from eight to three, I can see where that would be.
Attention spans with social media and different things, like kids' attention span isn't the same as it used to be, and so we do see a lot more like IEPs that shorten the days or create the schedule in a way that has kind of their bulk classes either at the beginning or in the middle to where they have their fun stuff on either end of that. And so that's a lot of the work that the schools and Sarah and the family will do together to kind of figure out like, how can we keep this kid in school?
So you've mentioned seven days a couple of times. Can you define that? Truancies, that seven consecutive days, seven days over the course of the school year?
Unexcused.
Unexcused absences, okay.
Yep. We'll get a lot of outreach requests for kids who maybe don't have unexcused, but they've had an abundance of excused absences that's still impacting their education or a lot of like tardies, so the schools know, and we've opened that up for them to send it over if they're seeing it impacting their education as well. So again, we've done a lot of collaboration with them on like where are they seeing the needs and how can we kind of respond to that as well.
So I'm gonna go back to stamina for a minute. I don't have any kids, you got grandkids in there in high school, but FIED, they still have FIED and physical activities in school, don't they?
Not every day, though. Some of them go every other day. They don't have like, when you were in the little red schoolhouse, got to go outside and play, so.
We had FIED. You know, that was an hour per day.
Is that when they walk to school uphill?
I did, miles through a snowstorm.
Yeah.
He had the horse.
But I don't think they have that every day.
You better not repeat that one.
Near high they don't, which I think is a bad.
Well, and there's different alternatives a lot of times for FIED classes to like bowling or swimming or.
Swimming, skating.
So overall, our number is, last year we had a hundred and eight assessments. This year we're already at seventy-three, thirty investigations, nineteen this year. We had one facility last year. We've done three this year already, and then our PSOP numbers are also increasing, and then truancy, we already kind of touched on, so.
Kristen, when you say facility investigations, is that?
Family childcare or child foster care.
So investigations meaning not assessment, but you've heard something that was, you wanted to check into?
Is there help to a little bit of a higher standard, so any maltreatment report that comes and that meets criteria is automatically an investigation, so we don't have the option to screen those as assessments. So if we get a report on a daycare that is not operating or that there was a physical abuse allegation, then that's automatically an investigation. And the difference between the two is an assessment is more kind of assessing what's going on, putting in services where an investigation, we have to determine at the end of that whether maltreatment occurred. And if we make a maltreatment determination, that shows up on certain background studies, so if they're working with vulnerable populations, then it will show up on their background study. So that's kind of the difference between the two.
Good, thank you.
Has, have the rules for daycare made it rougher to stay licensed or, is the state, I'm sure the state creates the rules that we have to follow? I'm just looking for your, if you care to give it, are we making it more difficult? Because I always worry about that when we're short on daycare and are we doing stuff that matters or not? I mean, everything matters, but you know my point when I was asking.
Yep, I think it's been about, I don't even know, several-year process of them like, we're gonna put all these rules in place and then they're backtracking and then moving forward. So there hasn't been any like really big changes as of this way to kind of the day-to-day operations. I think that's still just kind of in the works because they got, there was a lot of pushback to some of those regulations that were going to get put into place that would.
It's the purpose when we're trying to get people to do it, and I've heard from providers that, you know, you gotta have all this, and it just isn't worth it to me.
I think one of the providers told me, if I remember the page numbers correctly, it was eighty-six pages.
Yeah.
Thick, you know, and I think it's initially overwhelming to them. It's like, really? I've been doing this for twenty years and, you know, it's that type of thing where we're.
I think a lot of providers are worried that some of the regulations they were trying to implement, where it's going to take away from their ability to actually provide care for the kids because they're going to spend so much time doing the cleaning and the other regulations that they were trying to put in, but as far as I know, that has not gotten through.
But it's my understanding their insurance has skyrocketed.
I don't know about that, I guess.
Tina had shared that. Tina Dietrich, Wright County, she used to do daycare and she got out of it because of the rising cost of insurance to have in home.
I mean, I don't think that anyone who's doing childcare is usually doing it for the money. They're doing it because they really want to do that. Some people who are stay-at-home parents and they want to try to, you know, bridge that gap a little bit, but it's certainly not a super profitable career.
But when we license, we do everything we can to help them get the license and.
Yep, we work with the Wayfinder, Tana over at Ucap and have a lot of supports through her and through the licenser. Cindy was our licenser, now Jenny's doing that for family childcare and providing kind of here are the steps, ensuring that they have everything kind of in place, lots of pre-visits and answering a lot of questions for them, so.
Well, it's good to hear that you're collaborating with Ucap and, because otherwise it's just a duplication of things, and that's good to hear.
Yep, the initial email usually goes out to several people of like, here's who's going to help with each different piece of it. So they really offer a lot more of the supports and the grants and things like that, and we do the kind of licensing and regulatory stuff for that, so.
I'm curious, I'm sorry to interrupt you, so you receive a call and you need to go investigate that call, and I see those statistics. What I would really like to know is, is there a percentage of those that really, what is the percentage that requires intervention? And are there just calls that really don't? In our society, we see a lot of Karens making phone calls. So my question is, how many, you know, is there a statistic for that?
I don't have a specific statistic as to like how many cases are just kind of, we go out and we're like, oh, there wasn't really a lot of concern there. I would say a large portion of them, we at least either implement some services or put in a general safety plan. And then probably, I would say maybe twenty to thirty percent go onto case management for longer-term supports and services. That's a guess. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but there are, I mean, we get calls sometimes and we get reports that we are like, we don't really want to screen this in, but it technically meets criteria and we know like there's some other issues going on or whatever. Or continue, sometimes we'll get continual reports from the same person on the same family, and there's really nothing we can do about that because our mandate is we have, we can't consider who the reporter is or the credibility of the reporter when we're screening. And there's really nothing we can do about that because our mandate is we have, we, we can't consider who the reporter is or the credibility of the reporter when we're screening in a report. We are required to respond and, um, and so we often just tell families that like and, and let them know that they have the right to seek counsel or whatever. If they choose to do that, but that's not really our role in that. So um we will usually just kind of try to document the safety plan that's put in place and ensure that they're following it. And um review that with them again if there's concerns.
Yeah, and if, you know, the, the person is addressing some concern that does not exist, that's clearly documented, right? Like if we go out and say, well, we didn't see any of this, that's gonna be clear to the person who's requesting the information probably going forward.
Okay, thank you.
We see a lot of those come through for records requests later on for some type of family court file or something.
Right, right.
Um, so we, not only what fa- um family childcare, we also license child foster care and then our, our adult foster care um homes as well. Um, both family adult homes and that's where the family actually resides in the home with um the client. And then the community residential settings, which we just license the physical location of that. And then um those are usually staffed um houses, so. Um, through this, like I said, we're, the Coalition for Family Childcare just got reinstated and we're working um with them. To look at retention and building up our childcare force. Also with our foster care licensing, we've been working on the same thing, just more internally. Um, and I think actually yesterday, uh Beth and Tina did their first meeting with.
Oh my gosh.
Of foster providers to kind of gain what their needs are for um, for providing care. And like what supportive, what would be supportive for them and being able to stay licensed. Um, and just trying to get creative because our numbers are down, families often, like our numbers, our placement numbers are down. So then our licensed homes are down because we're not utilizing them as frequently as maybe in the past. And so just trying to get creative on how can they continue to be supports. And so we're using a lot of them for respite care for our children's mental health cases or for supports for families um in, in different ways. And so we're just trying to kind of assess that and look at how can we still utilize these people who want to be licensed. So we still have them when we do have a need for it.
They're like, I don't feel like I value them, like, oh my goodness, please don't say that, because we need you, just not right now.
So it's a good thing that we're not using them all, but we wanna keep them all, obviously.
Because when, when, I mean, our placement numbers are low and most of the kids who have entered placement go with a family member. And so there's a whole different emergency licensing process for family members if they're not already licensed. And so these are kind of our general foster homes um that then aren't feeling like they're being utilized to, to what their hope was when they get licensed, you know. Um, it's a good problem to have and we want to be able to maintain them, so when we, if we do have the need, like we have them on, um they'll license, so.
Trail was like Karen?
Yes. It was Karen. Who do I pay my five dollars to?
Currently we have.
It always comes to me, no.
Sorry.
Currently we have thirteen child foster care homes licensed, um three adult foster care sixteen C R Ss. And then twenty-eight family childcare. Keeps our licensers busy as well.
Are some of these uh licenses for emergencies, say in the middle of the night, they have to remove a, something you call them and they.
Yep. Yeah, all of our child foster homes are kind of, they're licensed for certain ages, depending on their training and what their preference is. And then they also, we have kind of a spreadsheet that indicates whether they're willing to take emergency placements and.
So do we know the average stay that a child is in foster care or not?
Oh, I had those numbers in the last report, um.
It's okay if you don't.
Yeah, it, over the last several years, it's gone down significantly, um we're getting kids back into their homes. Um, a lot sooner with the, with the appropriate supports, um but I would say, I don't know, several months. It, are, the numbers are kind of skewed too because we might have, because we only have like four kids in placement. One set of siblings has been in for a year and then one goes back after two weeks, so it's kind of like the average doesn't.
So and while it's a good thing we don't have, they're not in as long, is that proving that, are we preventing it from happening again? That's always my concern when we.
Yeah, yeah, our reentry in foster care, um I think we're meeting the Minnesota and federal guidelines on that. I think, I don't think we've had any kids re-enter foster care within like the twelve months, which, which is what the um, which is what they kind of measure for us.
And I'm assuming the families have a lot of follow up after they get back home.
Oh, absolutely.
Our first goal obviously is to place them with a relative or a family.
Yep. Typically, if, if a child's going home from a removal, they go on what's called a trial home visit. And we can have the authority with the court to have them on the trial home visit for up to six months. And that's where we maintain legal custody and the parents have physical custody. And so we're still heavily involved in um that and kind of have the safety plan in place, what would cause us to have to remove the child again. Um, things like that, so we really outline that in their case plans and there's, there's follow up with the court. And then even after that, there's the potential for us to just have protective supervision. So a lot of times those families are open for six months to a year, if not longer, depending on the.
Questions for these two, or have we gotten them as we went? I just wanna say that, that you have a very difficult job and all of H H S does a great job. And we are concerned about your safety, we are concerned about how you decompress because we want you to be here twenty plus years, thirty plus years. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Can I ask, are there, um, I know some of the, the concerns from the state, there's a number of changes. And such coming down or anticipated or looming. And, you know, how does that fit with all of this or there, is it gonna fit with pretty much what we already do? Is it gonna be, eh, end up being some onerous thing that's gonna shake things up more than we're anticipating?
Yeah, I mean.
You want me to answer this?
Take the floor. Yeah, I mean, we were just talking yesterday about just in general, not only, like every program's going through a lot of changes. And I feel like child protection, it, there's continuous changes with that, continual additions of documentation. Even though there's a whole bill to reduce paperwork in child protection, like if every day we're learned, like yesterday, there was a new screening for every kid. Like it's just, it just keeps coming and nothing's ever being taken away, which we try to look at. Like obviously our primary focus is child safety and trying to ensure safety and those other pieces, like we obviously have to do those, there are mandates. But looking at like, how do we have supportive, supporting staff to help with some of that? And that's where our case aide Christine helps with a lot of our, some of our, like a lot of our data entry, ensuring that our billing stuff is going through those pieces of that. She's very supportive um with me in those respects, um we have the act coming down. And um a lot of what's in there as far as like active efforts and preventing out of home placements. And trying to build on safety networks and things like that, like that's the work that we're doing every day. Um, the worry that I have with that particularly is that active efforts isn't like very clearly defined. And it, and it's different for every family. And so just really trying to work on when we're working with families, outlining our decision making towards like what is an active effort versus a reasonable effort. To very clearly like show that we are doing that, um I think all of, all of our staff do a really good job of really providing active efforts to all of our families. I mean, I think that's evident in our out of home placement numbers and how we are already preventing out of home placement. Um, there are still some gaps in the services that might be recommended, the ability to offer frequent visitations, things like that, transportation barriers, U As. Um, and we're kind of, I'm always looking ahead, so we're looking at those pieces of like where are our gaps? And how do we somehow kind of bridge those gaps in the meantime before it's fully implemented, um.
I would say that as a staff, we do a really good job of providing active efforts. Like once in a great while, I do have an uh I Q W case, which is Indian child welfare. So that provides like the highest gold standard level of care and service that we'd have to provide to a family. Well, I had an I Q W worker come and join me at a home visit and she was suggesting all these things, I'm like, yes, we're doing that, yes, we're doing that, yes, we're doing that. Then she suggested that we replace siding on someone's house, like um, I don't think we're gonna do that. Let me talk to my supervisor about that.
You're gonna need a contractor's license for that.
Yeah, and what it really comes down to is, is active efforts to prevent placement or to re-establish reunification, right? And so sometimes we might get these other pieces and so it's like, we really try to say like, well, that, do, doing that or paying for this isn't going to increase the child's safety. And so it's really kind of trying to flush some of those pieces out and very clearly, when we're in court, articulate that to the judge. And have our county attorney's office articulate that, so we're not losing that active efforts statement. Because really, that, I mean, that's part of it, is the court has to make a finding that we provided active or reasonable efforts and that's tied directly to our forty dollars. So it's, um, it's, I'm not worried about the work that's being done, it's just making sure that we're really clear. And that we have a solid foundation of educating people on what that looks like. And um the judge asked me to present at C J I about kind of the work we're doing and how that fits in with um MAP F A C W D A. And what active efforts versus reasonable and kind of looking at all the different best practice guides that have been issued on that. And um kind of laying that foundation for our whole C J I group. Um, and so those are pieces of work that I think are going really well. We've done a lot more advocacy too, Beth was on the Supreme Court um Council for Child Protection Work Group. Um, looking at kind of the frontline work that's being done, I'm part of the F F P S A steering committee. Um, in, among other work groups of trying to look at like, how can we get the work that's also being done already implemented into these um, into these acts? Because like with F F P S A, you know, the, the only approved services are motivational interviewing and um parents as teachers at this point. So then we had to go get trained through a multi-day training, all of my staff to be able to bill for this program. Um, we have to do fidelity monitoring and all these additional pieces, so quarterly we're, have to go in and record ourselves and do this fidelity monitoring for this program. Just to be able to access those funds. And so it's like, we're already doing really good work and what I would like to see happen is that they're looking at some of those evidence-based practices that the counties are already doing. And utilizing those through, like implementing those through those F F P S A dollars or different pieces, rather than making more work for us to have to get retrained. And something different, um that's really similar to the work that's being done. And so that's kind of, that's where we're at with some of those pieces of it, um it's frustrating and it's, it, it can definitely be a lot. And there's just, there's a lot to kind of keep track of and we just have a, we have a really good team, very low turnover. Um, people are doing the good work and I think that, that's probably why they're staying is because they, they feel like the work is meaningful. And, and can see the contributions to the community, so.
A few years ago, there was a death in Pope County of a child, which was awful. And that created a task force to look at, now, I need I say more? I don't know who they, I know some of the commissioners that were on the task force, but I'm not sure what they put in place. Because after I read about it, what happened was some people dropped the ball, it was a human error and this child suffered for it. So then they create all this more bureaucracy that we have to go through and I don't know if it hurt or helped, you know, I don't know. It was obviously a sad situation, but, and we always wanna keep the children in the home when we can. But Brandy will tell you, it's a lengthy and a costly, isn't it, to remove a child or keep them in. And that, it costs a lot of money and a lot of time. And some of it, they don't go to the people that know what needs to be done, they sit in a separate room and decide these rules. And it's frustrating, it's, if I'm frustrated, I can't imagine how frustrated you ladies are.
And really I think that when we stay grounded in our work and our goal of keeping kids safe in the home, we can see that. Even though there's a little bit more upfront work in pulling together their network and safety planning, on the backend, we're not going into court, we're not writing the court reports. The out of home placement plans are way longer than the in-home plans. Uh, we're not, you know, going to court every ninety days and, and adding those additional pieces of documentation. So overall, it frees up more time and gives us more time to actually spend with the families um than doing paperwork. And so we see kind of both sides of that of, yep, it's a little bit more work and it's probably better more, better work and more like fulfilling work. Than being at your computer filling out the required documents when you put a kid in out of home placement, right? So there's kind of those pieces and, I mean, excuse my language.
It's good to hear the pros too.
We're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't, right? There's probably both sides of it and so we just kind of, like we really just try to stay, what is our goal, what are our safety concerns? Can we, can we keep the kids?
But you still have people putting rules on you that probably some of them are totally ridiculous, Brandy. And when you go to court, everyone has an attorney that children.
Yeah.
I'm trying, now she ha- she has an opinion.
We have county attorneys on that committee as well and so they try to share their input, but it's not always received the same as the political atmosphere. That's kind of controlling the language that is being adopted.
And when one thing happens and we all rush to try to fix it, obviously, and it, and then we don't do anything more again till something else happens. I feel like, we don't do enough preventive, we need more dollars for preventive. Sometimes if, they just need a vehicle or a way to get to their appointments or some help in some small areas, but we created this.
Well, you have administrative law judges, a lot of times, these, a lot of the rules don't, it's a small group of people in a room. Uh, and I've sat on a few of these committees and it, the conversations get pretty um.
Heated?
Well, I won't say heated, but they, they come out of left field sometimes where it's like, what, what, what does this have to do with the problem?
Maybe we should put siding on their house.
Yeah, but, but then, uh, then that just has to go before administrative law judge and it, it goes into law and then you have to follow it. I think th- those are challenges.
I think what we see happen a lot too is just like the semantics of different words and like, so you have F F P S A, which is to prevent out of home placement. Except they already have to have an open child protection case and be at risk to even utilize that. So you can't use it in any prevention, serve, like any of our preventative programs or in children's mental health. You can't use that to also prevent placement from happening, right? And so it's kind of like, they put these great things forward and give us these allocations that are really boxed in for who we can use it for. Um, and then, or don't provide definitions, like that's the other thing with the act is, wh- what is a disproportionately represented child? And how are we going to know what population that is for, for that, is that gonna change? Is it based on each individual county, is that a statewide thing? Like I, I don't know, because I would imagine in our county, that looks very different than in Hanipin County. Um, but there's no clear guidance on that yet or even like kids of African American or not, yeah, African American dis- or origin, I think is what it says. Or is that kids from Africa, is that any person who identifies as that? Like where, like it, they just, like there's these broad definitions and there's been no yet um clarity on what that's gonna look like. And so it's a lot of meetings to talk about it.
Sounds complicated, very complicated.
Very many meetings, so they.
We can complicate things so much that you can't do the job.
Well, then we get the legislation, so legislation passes. And so this was yesterday's thing is tra- the trafficking, and they've created a new track for um labor trafficking for children, that child protection response, even if it's not a caregiver. And there's some new screenings along with that, so legislation passed, there's a new screening, it has to go on the out of home placement plan, except the screening tool is not available. And the out of home placement plan isn't updated to include it, so we have to make it up and just like, be like, okay, we have to go do this screening that isn't a thing yet. And the document, and figure out just where we wanna put it, um so then it creates this like additional work of, now we're, we're trying to create a process. Until they create their process, right, like, because it's just kind of backwards, but.
Is there duplication, that was, is there a lot, do you see a lot of duplication?
Oh, one hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And that's, you've got, do we just keep layering government on top and it's just burdensome, it's very suffocating.
Don't get me started on S S I S.
Well, see, that was my next question.
Don't get me started.
That literally was gonna be my next question, I've been waiting to say, how much of an issue is the S S I S?
Well, the last two weeks, we, it takes us thirty minutes to even log into it, so that's been fun. Um, it's very, for child protection, I would say it's very convoluted because none of this tab, not none of them, a lot of the tabs don't speak to each other. So like I Q W, for example, you have a whole I Q W tab you complete, but then there's four other spots, literally, that you have to enter it to be able to be in compliance with the I Q W audits. Um, there's different tools that don't pull through to the other thing, so you're entering the information in multiple locations. Um, and you don't have a choice because it won't let you close the case until all that information's entered. So you're duplicate, even for motivational interviewing on some of our case notes now, in order to be able to bill both, which we can do. We have to create two separate case notes in order to do that, so essentially you're, you're putting the same case note in just twice to be able to, to bill both programs, right? And so it's like, so as a supervisor, I look at that and look at, okay, where are the other areas that we can cut some of that documentation? Or time, or what supports can we bring in, there's only so much time in a day. And we have to balance out the work that we're doing in the documentation and those requirements, right? And if we get audited, we will address the concern, like we do our best and, and, and that's really truly what we, how we have to operate. Because we can never, we're never going to be at a hundred percent, ever.
How does that get addressed when you? How does that get addressed when you're down there talking to everyone, Steve? I'm curious how that goes.
Well, I think um, S S I S too, of course, they're thirty million? I can't remember what the number, thirty, thirty was what the final number was settled at. Um, might've been thirty-eight. I think they wanted forty and they got like thirty-eight. So it pretty well was funded, uh, of course, the concern, Julie Ring told me to shut up when I said it was. My, I think there's a lack of confidence that even though the funding is there, that what will this product look like? Yeah, you know, I mean, will.
Who's being?
What are we buying with their thirty-eight million? You know, I mean, that's, that's a challenging piece. Um, you know, and I, I don't know where some of this stuff comes. I sat on a public safety Zoom last week, the one day in the first thirty minutes of the call was a discussion on what we call incarcerated individuals. Because incarcerated individuals is a derogatory term.
My lord.
And so you s- then you're just.
Semantics.
Shut your screen off so they can't see your face. I mean, and it's, I can't believe we have some of the conversations we have.
Did they settle on a new word then, or?
I.
Stay around long enough to find out.
So one of the challenges with S S I S is the fact that it's just so outdated, right? It was, it was implemented in nineteen ninety-four.
Right.
Um, the, but it's of course also not the only one. You know, MAXIS, which is one of our other major programs is eligibility, nine? Um, it's two years younger than my brother. My little brother, two years younger than him. The um, M M I S is from nineteen ninety-four, PRISM is from nineteen ninety-seven. Like there's, we just have a lot of antiquated software. And um, one of the things that was in uh, an interesting way that was put to me was where the state funds all of this. The state develops this, but they don't see the benefit of the return on investment. Because the return on investment is felt by us. And so um, it's one of the challenges that we face as we go through this. But there's money that's to go towards it. I think all of our hope is that it's going to be something really positive, um, and maybe a little bit more modern. Uh, we'll see what we get out of it.
Are they looking to reinvent the wheel with this? Or is there a state that actually has something that is working?
Well, I don't know why we don't get Elon in here and just do it this afternoon.
I've had that. Let's clear the table and start over.
He's busy trying to save Tesla right now.
No, but I, 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 I think we overcomplicate things that could quite, quite easily, we can make these systems talk to one another.
Have they actually hired someone?
Ensure information with the state and take this reporting piece that's part of the, the act. That's going to cost us a boatload of money and streamline it. So we're doing mult- instead of layering government and duplicating things, we need to be doing multiple things at once within agencies and not.
With the same information.
Yeah, yes.
Dupliking everything.
I feel like a simple answer is not ever what they want when you get further into government, state government. I mean, you gals know better than anything what you need, but they're not putting the right players at the table.
Well, and they're.
They need, and then of course we're Meeker and then there's Hanipin, right? We're not the same.
Well, and you also have right now.
Does anybody have ibuprofen?
It's a real thing. I mean, you have a, a president and a vice presidential candidate that ended up on. I mean, that's a real rift between the federal and state right now.
I know.
And, and to pretend that that's not happening is, is just not being truthful. I mean, so those political theater, if you will, gets played and, and we all pay a price for that.
That's right.
And, and we are. I mean, that's, that's, I'm very unfortunate, but it's, it's what it does work.
Yeah, and thank you for all you do and for navigating all of that. Like I said, I could use an ibuprofen.
You do a good job.
You do.
So we appreciate all of you.
And we're seeing good outcomes here, less placement, so we appreciate that.
I have one last question. We've learned a lot about aces. So if you're in a home and then you end up in out of home placement, which is the worst ace or are they just both aces?
I think what we know about trauma is that it, it, it impacts every kid differently based on the number of factors, right? Based on how many other traumatic events they've had, their resilience, their support of adults, things like that. So it's hard to say that one is worse than the other. I think it's truly dependent on the family. And we do take that into a lot of consideration when there's ones that are like, uh, it, we could move to out of home placement. And that actually might be more detrimental than what's actually occurring in the home. And so those are also complications we have when we look at that as kind of where, where, where do they lie in that um, realm of like, what's the safety versus the risk in the harm that would be done in out of home placement?
Okay.
It's similar, uh, in public, it's almost a public safety standard, if you will. It's, uh, you know, like in public safety, our, our goal is never compound the issue. You know, I mean, you, you don't race to an event, get an accident on the way, because now you just doubled your problems, you know? It's, you have to get there, you have to mitigate the issue and go from there. So like you're, it's very a public safety response per case, per incident. Okay, this might not be perfect, but it's the best we got today.
It's also not a polarity, right? So removing a child from the home isn't getting the action we have. What if someone was in the home to establish safety? What if an adult wants out of the home temporarily to establish safety? Like, and I think I'll, I am currently going to wrap up here, but I'll just get on my high horse for one second. Um, because this deserves to be said. So you just heard a, a whole bunch of information and you brought up a whole bunch of complications. So we have a leader of this group of folks that manages that extremely well. So she's controlling the flow of all this stuff that's coming down the cap. So that her staff can do amazing work and you have a lot of supports in the county for that. Brandy's office is incredible to work with. The sheriff, law enforcement, they are incredible partners to us. So we've taken this whole system and I feel like what I encourage and I, and you might see a bad audit come out of us. Cause you know what? I don't care about this documentation, I care about the outcome for the child, right? And so I, I actually will push that, we talked about that a little bit yesterday. You know what, maybe we can take more of that. Isn't it statute, you know? Um, so ask those questions too. But we've taken this whole group of invest, invested folks, county and otherwise, and we really made an impact for Meeker County families. I'm super, super proud of this work. And I think the last time person was here, she brought some, some of those numbers with, right? And I think we have the leadership, we have an amazing dedicated staff. They show up every day, they do great work and we'll just continue to do that. The, the state and the feds can do whatever they want, but we're going to stick with this family. We're going to build those good outcomes. And as the decision makers and as leadership, some of our job is to push back and to hold.
Absolutely.
Part that's kind of a B S of accountability, out, out away from this team so they can just do their work. So I think that's what we see a lot happening and I, I'm also proud of that. Let's let them do the good work, we'll push back and we'll try and navigate that path forward for them.
I always go back to that meeting we had five, four, well, you were here, so four and a half years ago, whatever. And up in the boardroom and Tina was there and Paul and probably Kristen and you and the judge and the sheriff. And we brought all the key players in the room and had a pretty good pow on you. And I pretty much sat on the fence and watched the way I felt. But I think just having everybody in the room and say, hey, okay, we got the statute, but we, we in the room need to work together to provide best outcome. And that seemed to me kind of as always a turning point in my mind where things started to, when everybody put their heads together and said, oh, can we make this better?
Well, if you follow just the dollars, you've got nineteen and twenty, or we have almost a million dollars. I just figured this out, can I close out the class here? We had a hundred and forty-eight. So if you just follow the dollars, which isn't really the point in my opinion, but it demonstrates.
It, it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, identifies, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
I don't know. I ain't mine, that's safe.
Does anybody need five or shall we continue on?
Well, it depends on how long it's gonna take.
It's gonna take me a little while to get through it, so.
I might.
Let's take a five minute break. Yeah, we shall come back into session. Cory, are we on?
Yep.
Okay. We'll now turn to our county administrator, Andrew Lutson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the goal of the presentation today is to give the board an opportunity to review and give feedback on the draft uh, strategic plan. Uh, we're gonna go through each of the elements that are in the plan. If you're comfortable ultimately with what we have included in here, then we'll bring this forward at our next meeting for adoption. Uh, if you would like to see some significant revisions, then we will get back to the drawing table and uh, come back at a, at a future date, so. So first and foremost, our plan is titled Sowing the Seeds of Our Future. Uh, the title is intended to reflect, the plan is both aspirational. Uh, it's identifying that we're working to grow from the point that we're currently at. Uh, and this will occur through the completion of the goals that we've outlined in the plan and the work that we're going to do over the next two and a half, or two plus years. While also reflecting the rural nature of our community and the importance of agriculture and our local economy. Our planning process began in March, uh, when we had an introduction, uh, in a planning meeting with the department heads. When uh, and then in April, uh, each of you met individually with our facilitator, uh, and conducted interviews with him. Uh, we then had our full day work session in May. And then in June and July, department heads uh, worked to review the draft plan and refine the priorities and goals. And works to uh, develop the mission and vision statements that we have included in there. Today is your opportunity to review uh, the plan, potentially adopt it later this month. And then the real work begins when we work to implement it.
Can I ask a question? You had department heads review and, and we have a diverse group of department heads. Um, everybody was, had great ideas and, and brought forward.
Yeah, so the, the one thing I kind of skipped that was in there is between the full day work session and when the department head started to review it is, our facilitator put together a first draft of the plan and uh, including each of the different prior, or a number of the priorities. Uh, the, um, the strategies and the objectives that were in there and then some ideas for some goals. And then the department head team worked together to refine what those goals looked like, uh, and really kind of what those projects are going to be.
Okay, then one last question. Now, we've got two new department heads, of course, we have Holly and we have a new treasurer.
I would, I would say Holly was more part of that process than Heather was, uh, although Heather did participate in the last discussion that we had, it was at our last staff meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
So the Mr. Statement that we came up with was united to lead, driven to serve. Uh, and as part of the preparation for the workshop, as you remember, uh, each of us, uh, everyone who participated, uh, provided input on phrases, ideas and terms that could be incorporated into the mission and vision statements. Uh, they were then kind of the kernel of an idea, I'm gonna use these agricultural references as much as I can throw out here. They were the kernel of an idea, uh, that uh, was then um, that grew into what we have for your review today. Uh, following the workshop, we had a committee that worked to refine what that mission and vision, um, those ideas could be. We conducted a survey of staff, we had ninety-five responses to that survey. Many of you responded, I appreciate that. And of course, we had a, a large number of our staff participate as well. It's about where I was hoping that we would get as far as responses, it was great. The committee then took the most common responses in various areas, uh, and through the help of our, our good friend Chat G P T, uh, refined it into a um, a, a sentence, basically. And we, we worked that many times and, and that was more on the vision statement side of things. The mission statement, uh, as you recall at our work session, we, we kind of came up with this on that day. And uh, through the discussions, through the survey, we still felt comfortable with it and that's why we have it. The um, the mission statement is intended to be brief and memorable, uh, and reflective of our values and purpose. You know, being that it's unitedly driven to serve, expresses the community, our, our county's commitment to lead through service integrity and collaboration across the organization and the community. Uh, due to the nature and the breadth of our work, it can often feel like what we're doing is really individual, it's really siloed. Uh, this is intended to serve as a reminder that we're all on the same team and that we're all working to the same goals, uh, which is um, you know, what we then see within the vision statement. It's intended to also reflect our views ourselves as a leader, not only amongst, uh, within the community, but amongst county, all the counties as well. Uh, and our ability to bring uh, stakeholders together to solve complex problems as, you know, Steve Rick gave a really great example of in our last conversation.
I'm waiting for fertilizer reference.
We'll see.
Always.
Uh, our vision statement uh, is Meeker County serves with integrity and purpose, building trust and partnership to support the health, safety and wellbeing of communities where people choose to live, work and grow. Uh, it's intended to reflect our shared value that government operates through integrity and, and clear purpose. Uh, in our case, it's to build partnerships and trust, uh, and to support the health, safety and wellbeing of the community. The ultimate goal of being a place where people choose to live, work and grow. And then of course, we work to uh, achieve that vision through the uh, the goals and the priorities that are included in the plan. So some of the key terms um, that are kind of flow throughout the plan are the priority, strategies, outcomes and goals. And there's definitions in there and there's definitions in the, the documents as well. But basically the way to think of it is the priorities are the big picture buckets. The um, the strategies are the things that, you know, help to achieve those, those priorities. The outcomes are what we hope to see if we, we achieve those strategies. And then we, we achieve the strategies by doing the goals. So it, it builds from the goals up to the priorities. There are four priorities included in the plan. Uh, financial stewardship, assets and amenities, quality economic growth and organizational excellence. So our first one, financial stewardship. Uh, our strategy is to be prudent, thoughtful and responsible stewards of the public dollars. Basically our budget and the way that we use our resources. Our outcomes that we're going to have optimal value and benefit from all sources of revenue, available support programs and services. And that we're going to be fiscally responsible, efficient, accountable, cost-effective and transparent county services. There are three goals that are included in this priority. The first is to evaluate and report on the efficacy of county-funded programs focusing on mandated and non-mandated and core services. Second is to explore local option sales tax for long-term stability of transportation funding. And our third is through the annual budget process to evaluate opportunities for cost savings or reallocation of resources based on identified priorities while ensuring adequate resources are available. Our second priority is our assets and amenities. This is our, our physical infrastructure and our buildings. The strategy is to provide functional and modern facilities to support the needs of the county and the community. Our outcomes are uh, facility plans which balance the ability to pay with investments needed in essential capital assets. And prudent management of assets, property and physical amenities. There's four goals. Those are to support the financing of the uh, Meeker County Memorial Hospital renovation. To pursue the long-term solution for the operation of the demolition landfill and transfer station, prepare for the closure of the landfill upon expiration of our current permit. Develop a plan for the consolidation of the highway out shops, the goal of eliminating shops that have maintenance and safety issues that are no longer support the needs of the department. And develop a long-term plan for maintenance of the county buildings, ensuring they remain adequate workspaces for staff to be able to perform their work. Our third priority focuses on quality economic growth. Our strategy is to invest in economic foundations that create a community where people desire to live, work and grow. The outcomes that, that we will be a strong partner with cities and stakeholders countywide to create the environment for expansion of the tax base and economic development. And we will be a destination community that supports the needs of families of all ages. Again, we have four goals in this area. Uh, and that's through the E D A to promote the use of the county share of the statewide affordable housing aid and prioritization of the development of housing to meet the current and future needs of the community. Second is to support the outcomes identified by the childcare coalition through their strategic planning process and seek opportunities to develop and retain childcare slots. Uh, to update the county's comprehensive land use plan and to seek opportunities to connect individuals and families with existing services through strategies such as the development of a family resource center. And last is organizational excellence. Here, our strategy is to create and maintain a positive culture to remain a highly competitive employer. Uh, our outcomes are to have a highly functioning team of elected officials and staff working in tandem for the benefit of everyone in the county. And be in a best-in-class workplace that attracts and retains high-quality talent. The goals are to create a leadership and development training program. To evaluate job descriptions and compensation system compared to the market on an annual basis and implement the recommendations. To identify and implement staff team building activities and to provide an annual report to the board on turnover rate and trends in local labor market as they impact the company. So as we look at implementation, um, there's kind of three big buckets that I look at. One is knowledge and awareness, we need to educate our staff uh, on this and the public as well. Uh, we're going to do this through meetings, written communication, um, presentations. Uh, and then we're also gonna share information in our newsletter, on the website, we'll have a dashboard on our website that talks about not only what the plan is, but what are progress of the plan as we move through it. And then uh, we'll reach out and see to do some community presentations on this as well. We need to pursue the projects that are in there, uh, and then um, you know, we'll have accountability monitoring and tracking. So we'll come back and report on a regular basis of where we're at with each of these. So this doesn't just become a, um, a fun day that we had at, in the hospital basement with a, a document that sits on the shelf. That's not the goal. The plan identifies ten easy steps to. The plan identifies ten easy steps to implementation. I won't go through each of them, but it, it more or less covers what I had just said. We need to share the information. We need to ensure people know about it. We need to build that implementation into our existing work plans. We'll consider how we share information with the board on our agenda to include the strategies. We're going to hold periodic management team meetings to discuss statuses, brief the board on a periodic basis, perform an annual formal review with the board, and then celebrate our successes. So our next step now is to get your feedback on the priorities and goals and then pursue adoption of the plan and begin our communication and implementation. With that, I'm available for any questions or comments that you may have.
Well, I like, I'm just going to compliment you first off. I really liked the way it was laid out. Because when I read it in the board packet, it flowed. It, I, I just, it was nice. Very nice.
I had a good feeling about it, just the way from start to finish, kind of the way, the way he's, you know, when we did our interviews and then things were moving in the right direction all the way through.
And I really like David Umek.
I'm Mark.
I, I thought his method of facilitation because you and I had just been through a strategic plan where we used all the post-it notes and rip charts and you know, this was so much better.
And the timeframe on this is?
We're looking to have, this is our plan through twenty twenty seven.
Seven?
Through twenty twenty seven.
So two years.
Yes.
I was going to say that, you know, having gone through it and I've been through these before, they tend to be a little broad and kind of amorphous in a way. And my first, my first, you know, foray through it, that's kind of how I felt. But the more I've regurgitated it and re-looked at it, it's, it's just gotten better and better. And so I think, you know, in that regard, the more we can have opportunities to share this and the more often the people in the county see it, the more they're going to, it's going to sink in and it's going to make sense to them and it's going to work. And so I just think the more often we can implement the communication of it, I just think that's going to be just all the more beneficial for us. Because it's a good plan. I think it's really solid.
One of the things that kind of struck me as we were going through it is that there's nothing in there that I think is a surprise. That we came, we sat down and this came out of left field. We have no idea where this came from, right? But what it does is helps us organize our thoughts. These are the things that we, we collectively agree are important and they're priorities and where we need to focus our time.
Yeah, having a goal and a focus and a destination.
It also creates a benchmark, you know, it creates history for looking back. You know where your thought process was at that time. Snapshot, but this is where we were in twenty twenty five.
I think it also.
Better than the one we had.
Yeah, it also gives the public an idea of what we do. They need to know what, what we're, what are, what, what we do.
And we ask, they ask, we can point.
Yes, this is what we're doing.
For the next two years.
And I, I would hope something would be very shareable, that we can share it, social media-wise and.
One of the suggestions was to create a one-page and we'll do that.
That would be fantastic. Yep.
Looks like there's a lot of good work after that went into this. So I appreciate everyone that was doing it. And I'm fine with it the way it is. I.
It's, it's, it's great.
I saw nothing that.
Well done.
I wanted to add or change at all. I was just very pleased.
Okay, I'm going to say it. How much wheat is grown in Meeker County?
Not very much. It's mostly corn and beans.
I know. It's just very wheat-heavy and I'm just like, they don't even grow any wheat here. But that's okay. We're not in Kansas.
We're not in Kansas.
But that is, you know, it's the, the graphic and I get it.
It's a, it is a intended to represent agriculture in a broad sense.
Take that away and that, when we had that logo meeting that time, it looked, that was the logo we liked, but it was very bland.
It needed to flourish.
Needed to flourish, something.
So that kernel grew.
Every time it gets brought up, I point out decorative grasses to people and say that looks a lot like what's on the logo.
So what action would you like us to take as a board?
I guess, just want confirmation that there's, there's no changes the board is seeking. And if there are none, then I will bring this back for formal action during our next meeting.
I have none and anyone else?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I think it's excellent.
I'm good. I like it.
I've said mine.
Yep.
I think you can bring it back for formal action. We will do that.
All right, Administrator's Report. Yes, last week was a big week for the, the remodel. We had two really big milestones occur. The first is that Dispatch has moved into their new location. The move occurred on Wednesday. It went pretty smooth. You know, there's always hiccups when you're having something that is as complex and technically difficult as, as that is. There's still a handful of minor things that need to get resolved, but they've been receiving nine-one-one calls and it's been working. So I believe all of the stations have been officially moved over. When I stopped by on around noon on Thursday, two of them had been fully moved over and were operational and the vendor was starting to work on getting the third one over there, so.
And the staff that works in there is adjusting?
Yes, yes. I've heard some, some positive comments about the space. It looks very nice. And I, I think overall it's a, it is good. It is very good. The other big milestone actually occurred on Monday this week, so yesterday. And that's that our, our new secure entrance is up and running. I stopped by and had a, a chat with our checkpoint officer yesterday and it's, it's working. One of the benefits certainly is that when people come into the building looking to, as happened when I was there, get a passport because they're not certain where that office is, we now have someone right at the door who can tell them exactly where they need to go. They're not wandering through the building.
Are they still coming for passports there?
They absolutely are. They will, well, they came for driver's licenses up until the day that we moved.
There you go. This is true.
I, I don't think that will stop. So that's up and running. That's working. That, that whole fence is down. The door on Sibley is now locked to the public. You need badge access to be able to get in through there, so staff only is able to access that side.
We have signage.
There is signage up there and.
Staff can still exit there though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. So that is, that is going well.
Parking lot? When will that?
So the parking lot is likely going to occur in the spring.
Okay.
Is when that work is going to happen, so. We have the elevator over there that's going to happen in September. We're actually having a meeting later today to talk logistics for the, the court offices to be able to make sure that they have an ability to serve the public who would otherwise need elevator service. So, because that's going to be three to four weeks that that elevator is out of service over there. The, starting to look at doing an open house at the courthouse and law enforcement center to celebrate the work that's been done. We are targeting October for that. The reason for that is twofold. One, all of the little punchless stuff that needs to get done will get done and it'll look nice. There won't be hopefully many little things that still need to get touched up. And second is it'll give us an opportunity to advertise it in our fall newsletter, so. That's where we're at with the remodel unless there's any questions.
Well, I got a bigger question. Dollars. How do we, how are we?
We're still looking in a really positive spot. I think that we're going to be about two hundred thousand dollars under budget.
Okay.
That is impressive.
Which we had kind of thought about using for the.
A portion of it for the, the monuments sign out here. I'm actually going to come at our next meeting. I'll have some ideas for us for what we can do with the monument sign. If you recall, when we talked about this in November, one of the, the things that the board had asked for was that we, we seek for some contributions from the tenants who would have names on the signs. I have heard back from all three of them on that. And so I, I just want to have a conversation about how we want to pursue that project, so.
The yellow caution tape in the restroom here is there. It's been there forever. And the white ladies.
Yes, the vendor who has, who is responsible for some of the work that's in there continues to not be able to get it right is the challenge.
So it's been a repetitive.
It, it is a, it is a vendor that we have had a lot of challenges with. It's the one that we've really had problems with.
Little things like this are going to be fixed.
Yes, and Joel and I have talked about that.
So you're going through and getting a punch list for.
Yeah. Anything else on the remodel?
Do you want to put outlets up here?
We really should.
I, I'll talk to Joel about that.
But it might be.
Well, you know, we could just run a power strip up through the hole and you would.
You fish, well.
Come on, let's do it.
Oh, but you can fish. You can, that don't take much.
Right.
Conversation with Joel.
I fish it every day.
Well, you want a surge protector anyway on your computer, so you might as well have a little power strip here. Then you don't have to do any wiring.
Andrew, just go right ahead. They're having sidebars in this. Thought we asked them with commander or commander.
Commissioner Shufel.
So, uh, once again, a big thank you to the three commissioners who came out and helped with the bingo calling on Thursday evening at the, the fair, Steve, Darren, and Beth. We were able to raise four hundred nineteen dollars and yesterday along with Mayor Dingman and Chris Olson from the school, we dropped off a check at the food shelf for that amount.
So you already got your check.
Yeah.
Haven't heard a word about us. I think ours is a mass, that's why.
The other thing I wanted to have a really brief discussion about is firearm restrictions for the twenty twenty-six deer season. So some of you have probably heard about this, but in the, the legislature this last year repealed a, a section of statute that references the shotgun area restrictions. So we are part of the, the shotgun zone, which is, you know, kind of western, southern Minnesota is all within the shotgun. You can only use a shotgun or, or some other types of firearms. You can't use a rifle basically to hunt deer in Meeker County. That has been repealed, which now allows for hunters to use rifles in the areas that were previously the shotgun zone. However, counties have the ability to adopt an ordinance that places that restriction back in place. So that section doesn't go into effect until twenty twenty-six. We wouldn't be able to adopt an ordinance until twenty twenty-six, but if we did, there'd be a public hearing process and we would go through all of that. My question to you is, have you heard from any of your constituents about this issue? Do you have a strong opinion one way or the other? How would you like us to proceed and prepare to have a conversation?
I would just go around. Have you heard from anyone?
I, I've had some conversations on it. Actually, I was talking to, had some legislators call me a year ago when this first started getting talked about. And the support behind it, I'll just kind of give the, the support behind it is, uh, there's less, more deer are taken than lost. You lose too many with shotgun as far as they get away and then go die. So you have waste where with the rifle. They, they harvest more deer or harvested. And they don't see, and it's safer. They don't, everybody worries about a rifle and the long-range effects, you know, that type of thing. But that, that is not documented. So that's, that's kind of the, the, the conversation around it. I haven't heard really anybody anti on it. I imagine I will as, as things get closer.
Darren, have you heard anything?
No, but yeah, to me it doesn't make, make a whole lot of, when you said that, I'm like going, really? You take, you're banning rifles?
For a few years legislatively.
See, I'm not a hunter, so it's not like it's, you know, personally, I'm skin in that game, but I just, I'm just kind of shocked because, you know, yeah, you think you do a shotgun and you're going to have more.
It's not as accurate, so you have more deer get away and then they go lie down and die somewhere. And that's, that's kind of, and there's, I know there's stats like from zones that are rifle, you know, they have comparative data. I don't.
But, but the, 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 the thought behind the rifle ban is safety? What's the?
They shoot farther, right?
Yeah, yeah, distance. So they worry about.
Distance.
You know, housing and.
I'll go last. Go ahead.
I have not had any comments from any constituents regarding it.
I haven't either, but I was surprised to hear about this, I guess.
I have a couple of folks that have just said, we need to stay shotgun. And I'm just going to go from a personal note, right straight across the road from me, probably three hundred yards or less, they hunt that particular wooded area. An errant shot from a rifle would reach my property or my house or something out there. Shotgun would not go that far. So when we say, I agree, the kill rate is probably much higher with the rifle, but.
Though, and there's. Most people track their deer and get them. I mean.
There's data though on the distance of a slug with rifled barrels and stuff now is not, is not much shorter than a rifle. There's, that's why I said, there's a whole set of data to match it and stuff, but that's a conversation. I'm just sharing the conversation. Right now I have to.
I, I think it will be a controversial issue.
So what we can do is in our fall newsletter, we can include notice that we will hold a public hearing on this issue in January. The statute that allows us to adopt this ordinance goes into effect January first. So we could hold that public hearing then, get feedback from the community, and then you all can make a decision of what it is that you would like to do at that point.
Anytime you say rifle gun ban, you're going to get some.
Well, we're going to have differing views on it.
But I mean, absolutely. I feel like around here, they track the deer and they get them. They don't shoot and leave them.
No, no, it's just you don't get kill shots. It's not as accurate.
A wounded deer can travel a long ways. It's sometimes it's tough to track them, even though they're bleeding. You can't.
I don't like shooting them anyways, so that's just me.
Well, it'll be a good opportunity for some research.
Yeah. So we'll have a public hearing in January.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to get the data that the legislature used to come up with this.
Who brought this?
That would be good.
Uh, I'm not sure. I think Howell out of Stearns was, on Rockville was, I know he was a proponent of it. I, I don't know who authored.
I know our neighbors are having these conversations and I've heard from my counterparts that their, their, their board just started to talk about this and so. Yep, it's, it's the right time.
I, I really want to hear from the sheriff on this too because, you know, when you think about it during hunting season now, you've got folks moving around in vehicles carrying shotguns. During hunting season, you'll have folks carrying around high-powered rifles. You know, not that it makes any difference, but I would like to hear his, his take on it also.
Okay, we will reconvene and discussion about this in five months. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
So, committee reports. Who would like to go first?
Well, I can go first because I would be quite brief.
Okay.
As I've been out of the country for two and a half weeks. I haven't attended any, any meetings or anything. Before we did, I did leave. Those, Steve and Andrew and I met with various department heads for the budget committee. And so we've been listening to their, their requests and getting their outline, so. So, and I think we'll have another meeting this afternoon or after this meeting here, so. All right, that's it.
Who's volunteering to go next?
I can.
All right, Beth?
I was also gone for about ten days, so I don't have a lot. I had, when I got back, I had the Public Health CHB Exec Board committee, committee meeting and it was teams. And I couldn't speak because I wasn't operating in my, it's not working on for some reason. So what they discussed was what, what the county match is and how it's identified according to what programs. And it also came up something that I haven't heard about in the time I've been on this committee that there was sixty, over sixty-nine thousand dollars in, in the direct fees that are up for grabs, so to speak. So Kaiser laid out options for the money. One was for the CHS to keep all the money. The other option is to divide it equally among four entities, CHS and three counties. The other one is we do a population-based formula on how we divide money, so that was one. So those options were all tabled and we're going to discuss them at the August fourteenth board meeting, so. There was a discussion about an investment policy, which I don't ever recall having before. So I think Kaiser's looking into that. She wants to set up an education budget. So I think Kaiser's looking into that. She wants to set up an education budget. Um, and she's met with two consulting firms, um, to make the final decision on, uh, the consultant that we're gonna get for the innovation grant. Um, and the last item was they're requesting for board meetings to reflect other board meetings and their setup. Commissioners having sat on one side together and for the staff to sit on the opposite side together, so. Um, it's also something new that we haven't talked about in the past. If we're at a round table or apparently things are being missed when the commissioners are speaking, that, that the staff isn't. It would, I, I'm not on any boards where we have that kind of thing, so it was a little bit surprising, but, so that was that. Uh, that same day, I had an investment meeting, which I, uh, I got a phone call from my administrator and said, are you coming? And I said, not really, cause I'm in my pajamas, I forgot. So he sent me a link and there again, I could listen in, but I couldn't, they couldn't hear me when I spoke, so Steve can report on that. I didn't make some notes, but he was there. And then yesterday I had supporting hands, uh, in Olivia. And we just went over the, the upcoming budgets, um, there again, kind of the concern is, you know, what's gonna happen with Medicaid dollars? Um, and just basically went over, went over some success stories again with it. And it's, nobody knows where the funding is. We're well funded for the proceeding right now. So that was what I had.
Steve or Darren?
Darren, go ahead.
All right, um, I guess last, we had the, the last fifteenth of July, we had the MAP meeting. Um, which was the partners, uh, with prevention and then, uh, and that was, you know, it was pretty much the standard kind of deal. Going over the, um, um, I think trying to encourage people to, to hit out and, and get active and pursue some of the different things in the county and do the bingo and, uh, collect some, uh, signatures for prizes or something along that lines. And then we had the suicide prevention, um, coalition as well. And I think they're, they're really kind of pushing some of the, um, the research, trying to get more asset based, um, positive kinds of things that will help people in terms of, um, just having more resources available to them. And, and that means everything from supportive families to school participation, to extracurriculars, to, I mean, it's a very wide range of assets that, uh, will help support people's mental health. Um, then later, then later on that day, we had the work session for the CASA thirty eight, highway twelve, um, commission with the, um, uh, the, the city council of Litchfield. And then they had the presentation from MinDOT and, um, I think, uh, Phil was there. Just kind of talking about the options for that particular intersection, I think it kind of ended up landing on, uh, pursuing a roundabout in that, at that intersection, uh, which I'm good with. I, I am concerned or wondering about, um, how long that's gonna take and alternative routes. That's just kind of me, because like, where are they gonna go and how's that gonna affect Litchfield? But I think there's not, there should be ways around that that aren't too challenging.
Two years ago, last year, there was, uh, work that occurred on highway twelve and there was a detour around that area, so.
Yeah, I read in the paper and I guess I should have known this, but the city is contributing nothing financially to this. Were you, were we aware of that before we met with them?
Um, I'm not aware. I would have to have a conversation.
So that was in the minutes from their last Monday that this will be county and state and federal money. And their financial, if I read this right, their financial, which I guess makes sense. Uh, I just haven't thought about it that way when we voted on what we should do. Because obviously the, the stoplight was cheaper.
Yeah.
I guess I was under the understanding this was a group effort.
Yeah, I was too.
Let's, we, we, we'll get some more information.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it was in the paper, that's why I read it, so.
I, I understand.
Darlene, I think, or one of them had brought up that, you know, city money shouldn't be, I don't know, but you will pursue it. Cause it kind of puts a different light on our partnership than in my mind, but maybe not.
Yeah, I would agree, absolutely.
I read it yesterday, so.
Um, so that was that. I did not go to the Lundin Planning and Zoning Meeting and I'm glad it didn't. That there was really nothing too, um, concerning about that. I did go to the Kingston Township Meeting. Um, and, and no, at Kingston Township, the Lions Club Meeting on the seventeenth, that was kind of interesting. Um, just kind of introduced myself to all the, some of the folks in Kingston, which I knew a few of them from when I went to their township meeting, um, but that was, you know, that was positive. Um, just looking to see what else. Emergency Services Board Meeting you were at. Cause I did not attend that, but, well, and then of course we did bingo calling, which was a, a hoot and always a good time. So that's all I've got.
By the way, I forgot to thank you Darren and Paul and Lori and Sharon Peterson, Ivy.
Myers.
Uh, Marlon and Connie Meyer and, uh.
Megan and Dana, not Megan.
Megan and Dana, not Megan, all helped and we were busy and so I appreciate everyone's help.
No, it was, it was a good time.
Lori Johnson, the new member on, on the board, worked hard to get that together, so, thank you.
Steve?
All right, well, it's been a little while, hot minute since I've been able to do, but basically a lot of budget, seventh, eighth and ninth of July were, were budget meetings. And then, uh, they're back here and had the, uh, the work session with the, the appropriations on budget. So there's still some things we'll tidy up on that one. Um, and then we also have budget. Probably like right now, weren't we gonna do it at like ten thirty in?
Yes, yes.
So we'll have that with, with HHS short, right after we're done here today. Um, and there's a NACO, uh, out in Philadelphia from the tenth to the fifteenth. Um, elected a new president of NACO from Michigan, from Detroit area. Uh, Ms., uh, Bell, Commissioner Bell from that area. Um, there, uh, was a, that was my first NACO conference that I was at. Um, it's interesting that there's a lot of similar issues across the country, as we have here in county government. Era, you know, infrastructure, uh, you know, housing, you know, daycare, things like that. Um, you know, Todd Patzer from Lake Faro puts it pretty good when he says, he goes, really, the only difference is where the decimal point and how many zeros are. He said, other than that, the problems are relatively similar, so. Um, but a good, a good event nonetheless, um. Grove City Care had their picnic. They have an annual kind of residence picnic and, uh, that all went real well on the middle of the month. Uh, and then Reentry Services, I had on the seventeenth, that was a Zoom meeting, um, and some of the terms that we talked about, that was one I had mentioned earlier. Um, identity terminology, uh, health coverage, mental health services, substance use and treatment and legal status. Um, and this is all reentry services, there are folks that are coming out, they've been incarcerated and they're coming out of back to reenter, back into, into society, if you will. Um, but into, but mainly get them back into the workforce, get them to be productive, so, I mean, all in all, it's a, it's a, uh, it's a worthy topic, um, just some of the conversations and they're probably out of my comfort zone a little bit. Out of my specialty, but, uh, um, then, uh, Grove City Care. They have, uh, Windmill Days is coming up in Grove City on, uh, uh, August sixth, fifteenth and sixteenth. There'll be a, their main, their parade is on Saturday evening this year at, uh, five o'clock. And I also didn't know that, uh, our deputy, or Ryan, what is Ryan Schutz?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, no, that's what I thought. I was gonna call him deputy, I, I thought he was a sergeant. His wife Brittany works for Ekkumen and she sits on the board there too, so it was good to make connection there. Um, they're doing good. They bought a, they bought a vehicle there earlier this summer and that's been working out really good for getting people to and from doctor's appointments and different things like that. Um, taking some pressure off. They were using their own vehicles for that kind of stuff, so. Um, then I had also had the Emergency Services Board Meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Oh, we had Investment Committee Meeting too, uh, last Tuesday. Um, I went over with Heather and Sharon before Sharon left us to have that invest, last Investment Committee Report. And, um, and just talk about the, the interest rates are holding fairly stable. So we've been able to have a, a positive income on, on interest earnings comparative to three, four years ago, I should say, um, last year they were probably a little higher, but, but the main thing is we're holding steady and we don't, didn't see that to change anytime real soon, so. Um, that is about it. Uh, there in the fair, I was there, I think, I was at the fair on Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so. And just proof that I went to NACO, I did get my article in the, in the, in the news, in the county news from NACO, so.
That was a big deal, I gotta say. I was like, I'm reading through it, I go.
We are making a difference.
Steve is in here and this is like the national NACO paper.
We are, we are making a difference with the amount of complaining we've been doing. And actually, Andrew is at next two.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday. Um, Julie has reached out to Andrew and myself and Tina to, um, uh, do some more further conversations on some of these, the cautious and, and HHS, uh, snap and, and Medicaid impacts and how we just keep our finger on the pulse there, so. That's all I got.
All right, well, I just want to know, being at the fair that many days, how many full, uh, hot dogs did you eat?
I had none. I had none. Watson Burger at the, I, I do like the four H food stand. And the mission and the, what is it, MST?
Lutheran Burgers?
I got to eat, um.
Didn't upset this Catholic?
Eat the special meal that was put together with the grandma of the kid who won the, the contest. That was kind of cool. Uh, and apparently it was like, he had a big negotiation because he wanted it to be six bucks. And the fair wanted it to be nine bucks and they settled on eight. So I didn't realize that the kids who won the food competition to create the meal had a s- say in how much it was gonna be charged and all that, but it was, it was kind of interesting, but it was good. It was delicious.
I think the fair had a, they had a beautiful weekend.
They did, it had great weather.
I think they had really good attendance. There was a lot of people playing bingo on Sunday, I mean.
Saturday night, we were, well, it was like boom, boom, but then we got busy.
Yeah, by the end it was like double rows all the way around.
Yeah, they were outside, on the picnic tables, Beth couldn't get an accurate count, we're probably all going to jail because of it.
I don't know, I might, I signed nothing.
No one that worries about accuracy, I don't think.
Did I sign anything?
I found out that if you improperly call bingo, like, there are people that catch you real quick.
Absolutely, those people take it serious.
Improperly, what do you mean?
I, I, what, and what is it, one through fifteen, so it must have been G, I called G like sixty or something and they're like, gee.
That's B, that can't be G.
And that's O. And I, the worst part is, I did it twice. On the same, for some reason, the same ball.
Same person caught you, right?
Yes, and the same two ladies.
If only the balls were color coded to help you know whether.
I don't know why, I just.
Still works well.
It works, it serves the purpose.
Got the job done. But it was fun.
Well, it's, it's been a busy couple of weeks, but most of my meetings over the past couple of weeks have been, um, personnel meetings or meetings, um, uh, of a nature, I'm, I'm not even gonna report on them. Uh, we did have a Prime West Compliance Meeting, which I am finding so interesting. However, we almost always right away go into closed session. So can't discuss those anyway, but I mean, um, that compliance really is very particular and, and very exact. I mean, they, they really do follow that. Um, we had a CCT meeting, um, that was primarily, um, that was a joint powers board meeting. It was a long meeting because it was over four hours long, on which we discussed many items, uh, concerning the operation of CCT. We made some adjustments, we're looking at, uh, a complete remake of the bylaws, uh, which we are hoping is coming forward soon. We had a presentation on it. So Brandy, your work will be coming your way. I know how much you love.
When was the last time they even did that?
Well, I mean, uh, just to give you an example, the bylaws, the only person who can call a special meeting is the executive director.
I'm not CCT's legal counsel, am I? I'm PACT.
PACT, not, not CCT. But I mean, so the chair can't even call a special meeting, only the executive director gets.
I don't know who he is for legal counsel.
Dodged that, Paul.
Gotta screw that up.
CCT.
Um, I do want to say something about the work session, uh, that was, uh, for me, I really enjoyed hearing from the folks and making that presentation, uh, about what they were asking for an appropriation. I think that.
Yeah, sorry, I missed.
That, that really helped me, because otherwise in the past, we've said, all right, the budget committee has said, here's our appropriations. And you guys got the presentation and we didn't. So this was nice to hear and see and be able to ask questions of the folks who presented. So I, I was, I really did like that format, I did.
And we still, when, uh, we still had a few open questions.
Yeah, which we wanna, wanna for Cheryl and, and Beth.
Some more input on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we know when we're gonna do that?
We will do it.
Well, I just didn't know.
So, um, the, the couple, the couple that were related to the committees that Cheryl's on, I figured we could talk about that today when we were talking about the budget. Uh, and then we'll talk about all of the appropriations again at the work session coming up in a few weeks.
Okay, all right.
Then last Monday, we were supposed to have a full board meeting in Morris, uh, for CPT. Interestingly enough, Sunday night I got a call and they said, we got five or six inches of rain. The lift stations are not working in Morris. Everybody's basement is flooding. The town is a mess. We don't even know if we have a place to meet. So you have folks that come, that drive four hours to get to this meeting. Now on a Sunday night, we're trying to find them by phone, by whatever we can and let them know. Never thinking that they might be sending the alternate. So we had three alternates show up in Morris.
Oh my.
Uh, that morning, that didn't know.
So you didn't do it remotely, or you just didn't have a meeting?
They just, we just didn't have it because the folks were home cleaning up basements that we needed to make presentations. So, uh, we'll have a full board meeting this, uh, this upcoming one, but, uh, learned a lesson there. Uh, we will gather all alternate cell phone numbers and, you know, you make a mistake, you learn from it, move on, and that's what we're gonna do there. Um. Yeah, that was all. The, the big item I want to talk to you about, um, is we had a prime health meeting. And at the prime health meeting, we were to vote on the rates for the upcoming year. Um, and I believe most of, um, Meeker County's rates were seven and eight percent increase. Um, prime health, uh, experiences, trends is like everybody else. Quarter one, quarter two, um, they generally, for the lack of a better term, they make money or can bank money because in quarter three and four, it takes from the bank then, okay? Um, however, this year utilization is up forty two percent in quarters one and two. So, um, we didn't get to bank very much money for quarters three and four. Uh, when they made the presentation, the actuaries now, um, who decide, uh, look at the data and recommend our rate of increase for the following year, um, were the ones that said seven, eight percent and the, the different ones for different counties, but, um, uh, have made that recommendation. However, right after that, um, Jim Persbilla spoke up. And Jim said, are you guys doing this right? Are you raising them enough? Which caused everybody to, you know, when Jim Persbilla talks, everybody listens because he is so knowledgeable and so well versed in this. Which caused everybody to, you know, when Jim Persbilla talks, everybody listens, because he is so knowledgeable and so well-versed in this. And so they postponed taking a vote on the rates and wanted all of us to go back to our respective counties and suggest that instead of it being an eight percent, this year perhaps we take ten percent to ease the burden, so to speak, in case things do go bad in, in three and four, and spread the rate, okay? I've had a discussion with Andrew on this and, and I have my feeling, and I think Andrew and I, we kinda mirror feelings on this, don't you? Um, but I have to go back next um, Wednesday. And all counties will be back there to say whether their county supports the additional increase or not. Now, the one thing you wanna remember is if yes, if we said, if you, if you say to me, I want you to vote this way, if they don't need that two percent, it goes in, it doesn't go anywhere, stays in our funds and perhaps next year, they could have a lower impact. Right?
I think it's, I think it's a bad year to go over seven or eight percent that they need, I, I mean, how much money are we looking at here?
Um, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars is the impact.
So, so it's not a lot, but.
And there's also an impact, a similar impact on employees.
Right.
On employees.
That's what I'm saying.
So it's both. Now, Andrew and I's discussion is this, and, and I don't mean to influence how you're gonna think here, and I don't wanna do that, but we have paid actuaries who studied the data and made a recommendation of eight percent, seven and eight percent. Why are we just not listening to them and following the actuaries?
Would be my, I think that's what you should do.
Is that the will and pleasure of this group?
It's mine.
For me to.
I wouldn't care about that, I have a hard time, I mean, what'd you hire him for? I mean, what, you hired him and paid him?
And, and I agree with what you say about Jim, but I still say, we hired somebody to do it and I think that's what we should do.
I would agree as well, yep.
Okay, then that is what I will take back to the group.
That's exactly my feeling.
I mean, it's nice to be able to have money, but we don't have that, this is a bad year for you.
I don't think this is the year for them, you know?
I, and I understand Jim's point, because he probably is anticipating next year ain't gonna be real good either.
Well, because everything's up in the air.
Well, he looked at all the other insurance companies, everybody's had a double-digit increase.
Of course.
But if our actuaries are saying, we can weather the storm.
That's right.
Then.
You have, you have substantial reserves, even if it was tight or stretched, whatever.
Did they make a decision on weight loss drugs?
Yes, they're not paying for it.
So that's gonna make a difference too.
It will make a, it will make a bit of a difference, yeah.
I'll probably agree with the decision, but.
It's the utilization that's, that had changed so much, you know, we just didn't have that kinda utilization before.
Well, we had, it happens, right?
So that is the message I will carry back from Meeker County. I, I, I agree with all of you, I, I just think it needs, we need to listen to the actuaries.
I'll bet you most of the counties are gonna say that, but we'll see, cause I heard a little bit about it yesterday at my meeting.
Yeah, um, I just wanna remind everybody, um, there is a public meeting, not a hearing, but a meeting, Mr. Schmidt, um, about the roundabout on the thirteenth from four to six, it's an open house. Bolton Mink will be there and uh, Phil was saying, some others that were gonna be there. We can come and go, we don't have to go, it's, it's, it's not a mantra, but I think if we support something, if we can be there, that would be good. Then Ron Dingman reached out to me. And I spoke with Andrew about this also, um, they would like to um, have the commissioners take a tour of the Newlark Building. Um, and they are thinking the week of the twenty-fifth. My thought, and I, I posed this to Andrew's, I said, we could do it after our work session. Um, just a thought, it's up to you guys.
Isn't that picnic week too?
Picnic's on Wednesday, yes.
So this would be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
Either one of them days, I would say.
Yeah.
After the picker could work too.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Works with anybody, it's good.
Yeah, either one is fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll let him know, um, either one of those two dates will work. I, I kinda had the impression Ron wanted the commissioners as a group rather than intermixed with other public groups, but I don't know that for fact, but I just kinda had that. And then on Saturday, just coming Saturday, uh, Pearl Works is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary from eleven to two. So if anybody is around and wants to stop in there, um, they provide a great service to our county and to the folks that uh, are challenged in our county by giving them meaningful work and, and so, uh, they'll have food and different events out there. So if you have time, stop by, please.
I have one more addition to make. Wagner Farms in Forest City Township um, is, you know, they're working on their anaerobic digester. And Greg Schultz offered, you know, if we would wanna take a tour of a facility in Wisconsin and I, I have gotten several calls from people on Lake Richardson with concerns about this digester. And so I will be going to um, next Monday to tour that facility in River Falls, Wisconsin. Um, so if anybody has any concerns or questions a- as I'm, I, I'm going, let me know if, if there's something that you want me to look for. Uh, you know, I've done a little bit of research on it, just because several, you know, it is one of my townships and several people have great concerns about it. So if anybody has any input for me, I would appreciate that, so. Uh, otherwise, I'll be there on, on Monday and I'll report back.
Are there, uh, did you know Cheryl, if any of those individuals are going? That have any concerns, you know what I mean?
Yeah, um, a- a- as far as I can tell from Greg's email, no, it would be, there's a John Smith, I believe, yeah.
My name's Owen.
Yes, and myself, um, and then uh, someone from the Wagner um, family will be there as well. But um, yeah, otherwise, I don't, I don't know that, so, yeah.
But I got a couple called.
Yes, so let me know if there's something, I've done a little bit of research on the pros and cons of these facilities. And so, yeah, just wanted everyone to know that I'll, I will be doing that and I'll report back next evening.
You know, you bring up digesters, last night on Channel Four News, they were showing where they were taking garbage, regular household garbage?
Yeah.
Making methane gas out of it.
And, and that's what this does, is that, that Wagner is a, i- it has um, cattle and so they will take that um, manure, plus they are bringing in, um, they will bring in um, food waste, just food. Uh, yes, perhaps, uh, to make gas and then they'll haul that gas out. So um, we'll have concerns about the road there, um, to the Wagner Farm. Uh, there'll be a lot more traffic from trucks on that. Um, and then what are the possible, um, um, you know, if something would go wrong? The people on Lake Richardson are concerned about their lake and what, how that might affect them. Yes, environmental issues, so, um, yeah. And then there is a public meeting on uh, Tuesday, the twelfth, um, for people in that area. I believe it goes out to anybody within five thousand feet of that uh, facility. So there will be a meeting and I will uh, attend that as well.
When is the meeting?
It is on the twelfth and that would be um, I believe it's on the twelfth. Um, did, oh, did get a letter here, just a sec.
Sure.
It is on, it, public notice was given as is required.
Yep.
Yeah, August twelfth at the planning, um, at the courthouse, it says. The hearing will be at the courthouse, August twelfth at five P M. So.
Wagner is a dairy, so they have a lagoon already.
Okay.
So the, so a couple of cons are, a lot of the, the initial things are already in place here, but they're, the concerns are the trucking of inbound and out.
And the, and the order from it, um, they do have some order from them. And then, so the people on Lake Richardson are concerned for their lake and their property values.
Where are they, where are they located?
Um, that's Forest City Township, so it is.
South of Forest.
South of Forest City, but.
Too far, too far. South of, kinda in the, south of the uh, uh.
East of.
Forest City Stockade and.
Yes.
Okay.
And a little bit east there, but.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, did we have any other, did we dodge a bullet with that train derailment?
Yes.
Situation up north somewhere?
We did.
No.
On that one, huh?
Me too.
No significant issues, um, no hazardous materials, the railroad's been a good part.
Nice.
I'm sure, you know, I, I, Beth, if you would close your ears, I'm sure you all saw in the foreign country that's asking for unwanted pets and so forth to feed their zoo animals.
Yes.
I believe they actually had that on the national news to. Wasn't where Denmark or Switzerland or something.
They even wanted horses.
Honestly, goodness.
Well, everything has to be.
Alright, is there any other business to come before us today? Alright, we are adjourned, folks.